Call to me in order, roll call.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy. Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mrs. Kratz is in the building, she'll be joining shortly, and Mr. Panarallo.
Here.
All present.
Let's rise for a pledge allegiance in moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board met for an executive session on Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. The topic was personnel. The session lasted approximately 180 minutes. The board met for an executive session on Tuesday, today, September 24th, 2024. Personnel was the topic. The session lasted approximately 60 minutes.
At this time, I am very excited because we have our first student representative report, and we have with us Liliana, who is our senior representative, and we also have Allison, who is our junior representative. So, welcome to the school board of directors meeting. We look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Good evening, board members and attendees. We hope everyone had a safe and happy start to the school year. Allison and I are excited to bring you a recap of the back-to-school festivities at BASH. First, I would like to welcome Allison to her first meeting as junior board representative.
Hello, everyone. My name is Allison Chapin, your new junior representative, following behind the footsteps of our now senior representative, Liliana Myers. I'm honored to be here with you today, and I believe that this will be an amazing opportunity for me to understand both the foundation of my own and my peers' education. I've been a committed member of my youth and government delegation for the past four years, now residing as one of our senators. I'm also the treasurer of the drama club and a new member of the Berks County Youth Advisory Board. Well, enough about me. Let's move on to some important insight into the beginning of the school year.
I'm very excited to work with Allison this year. In addition to our new representative, we would also like to begin highlighting the elementary schools during our report. Each month, we will pick one to two elementary schools and share some of the highlights in addition to our continued middle and high school luncheons.
August 26th marked the first day of school for students. In order to help with the transition, BASH ran some homeroom activities to familiarize students with new rules and expectations, their career portfolio requirements, as well as to do some icebreakers to get to know each other. These homeroom meetings were very informative to students as they navigate the new school year. The first day also marked picture day and health screening. Throughout the day, homerooms went down to the bear and cub gym to get their ID pictures taken and their health screenings.
Two weeks ago, BASH's class of 2025 joined in one of the first of many senior festivities, the Senior Sunrise. The class officers provided donuts, hot chocolate, and coffee. Although there was not much of a sunrise, we were all grateful for the time we got to spend with one another and celebrate the start of our senior year. We would like to thank Mr. Freeze and the class officers for making this event possible.
While it has only been a few weeks into the school year, the clubs are up and running, and most have already had their first meetings. Youth and Government, a club designated to bring students together that are interested in government, met on Wednesday, September 11th, at the Boyer Town YMCA to address the year at hand and goals for leadership in the club. The Student Diversity Union had its first meeting on Tuesday, September 10th. The Student Council has been working since the start of the school year, planning events for the student body. Their first meeting is on Tuesday, September 3rd. Key Club met on Wednesday, September 11th, and Impact Club met for their first full group meeting on Thursday, September 19th.
September is National Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month. In order to help raise awareness and funds, BASH hosted its annual Gold Out game. We saw lots of school spirit, both in the student section and throughout the halls at school. Although we lost, it was a close game with the final score of 24 to 28. Throughout the game, Student Council was able to raise over $700 to support childhood cancer research.
Next month marks some exciting events for the student body. One of the most looked forward to being the homecoming dance. Already, we see flyers for seniors running for homecoming court, and it seems that everyone's quite excited for both the game and the dance. Besides the dance, one of the most colorful days of the year coming up in October is Pink Out, an event bringing awareness to breast cancer in our community and beyond. This day marks an event that is one of the most participated by the student body. Of course, coming in October marks the end of the first quarter and the finalization of grades by teachers and receiving report cards by students. It's hard to believe that the end of the first quarter will be coming so soon.
Thank you all for listening. We've had a great beginning to the year, and we can't wait to continue highlighting all of the wonderful things happening at BASH. Have a great evening.
Thank you for the presentation and your enthusiasm. Much appreciated. At this time, we have a presentation by Dewey as an update to our Boyer Town Elementary HVAC proposal.
Thank you very much. I will try to be as enthusiastic as your student representatives. I apologize if I don't pull it off. So, we're here to give you an update on the progress for the HVAC and roof study for the elementary school and to seek a little feedback from the board. So, just to give you a refresher of what's currently there, the building was built circa 1960. The existing HVAC system, the classrooms are package unit ventilators. The refrigerant is currently an R22, which was phased out in 2020. There's limited space above the ceilings, and your existing roof is two inches of insulation and is an R3 right now. So, at this point, I'm going to have Kevin walk you through some of the HVAC options.
Thank you, Chris. Just wanted to give you a quick overview of what we discussed at the last meeting. There were five different types of HVAC systems that were considered as part of our investigation. The description of each, written description is on the slide right now. We'll have graphical representations on the next couple of slides to give you a feel for how the architecture of the equipment goes together. First option and second option are very similar. They are basically heat pumps with dedicated outdoor air systems overlaid on top of the heat pumps. Really, the only difference is the second option utilizes natural gas as a fuel source. The first option uses electricity as a fuel source. Option three is adding a central plant to the building. So, that would be a central location for heating, boiler system, and a central location for air conditioning, a chilled water system. That would then have unit ventilators in the classrooms, similar to what's there now, only some advantages as far as acoustics. The fourth option would be an in-kind replacement of the existing equipment that's within the building, with a minor caveat that the existing equipment would have a lower efficiency than the replacement equipment. The heating in particular would be a big improvement. And the last option that is reviewed is to continue maintaining the existing equipment that's in place, as you have been for the last 60 years. So, draw your attention to the slide that's on the board. This is a graphical representation of some basics of how the two VRF with DOAS options work, options one and two. You will see that each classroom has its own local thermal control. There's a unit that controls the temperature within each of the spaces, and overlaid on top of that is a separate ducted system to provide fresh ventilation air to each of the classrooms. The fresh air is going through an energy recovery device to reduce the energy consumption for this option, and it is dehumidifying and drying out that air before it ever goes into the classrooms in order to maintain a good level of dehumidification in the summertime. This next slide is basically identical to the first slide, with the exception that, as I mentioned earlier, the heat source for this option is natural gas. Aside from that, the architecture and layout of the system is the same. The next slide gives you an overview of the central plant. The central plant is depicted on the right side of this slide. It would be the addition of redundant boilers to provide hot water as a fuel source for the building. A chiller located on the roof incorporates some redundancy, but not full redundancy. That's a design preference. If you would prefer to have full cooling redundancy, you could do that. The first cost would be a little bit higher. The cold and hot water is then distributed throughout the building through a new piping system and distributed to each classroom where you have local temperature control with classroom unit ventilators. A challenge to this type of system is dehumidification, removing moisture in the summertime or in the spring and fall is harder to do with this type of equipment. The next option, this is option four in the initial list, is the replacement in kind. So, the classrooms currently have a piece of equipment in each classroom that has all of the components required for heating and cooling for that particular zone. This option would be something similar to that, with the caveat that the heating system provided by this would be done through a heat pump, which provides significant energy advantages during the temperate seasons. And the last option is looking at, there's a picture showing one of the unit ventilators that's currently installed in a classroom. It would be to continue to repair these components, and as time goes on, it becomes more and more difficult to find replacement parts. When we went to go back to the manufacturer to confirm manufacturing dates for the equipment, they actually kept back to us and said, "We can't. We know that it was built sometime between 1960 and 1980." So, here's kind of the bread and butter of this presentation. The next page has a chart that describes some advantages and characteristics of the equipment. I'd like to start at the bottom of the chart with the learning environments, and you'll see that there's a best, good, and poor description attached to each of those options. In this context, what we're considering is the disruption that the equipment would be providing to the classroom environment. So, the first two options, the VRF with DOAS, provides a very quiet HVAC system within the space. It's not distracting. The fan noise is very low. It also provides excellent thermal and humidity control within that space. The four-pipe unit ventilator central plant and package unit ventilator heat pump. Four-pipe central plant is good. Again, it's a relatively quiet system, but it does have the challenge of dealing with dehumidification, which can, which can be an issue. The fourth and fifth options, all of the refrigeration components are concealed within the room. So, all of the noise associated with compressors, fans, condenser fans, all of those components are within the space. And that, unfortunately, when the components turn on and off, it can be a distraction due to just a disruption in the steady state noise within the spaces. My children have ADHD, and for them, sitting in a classroom next to this type of equipment is a constant distraction. Every time it clicks on, I have to pay attention to that. So, that's in the context of this presentation. That's best, good, and poor. Maintenance is just a description of the components that are required to be serviced. They all have service requirements. Life expectancy is straightforward. That's an estimate of the lifespan of the equipment when it's installed. You'll see that the central plant equipment has a longer life expectancy. That's just due to the robustness of the construction of the equipment. Heat source is straightforward. The two options that utilize natural gas as a fuel source are the DOAS with natural gas heat and then the central plant. And then, the one that everybody cares about, conceptual cost estimates. These are estimates that are based upon some rough takeoffs at this point that can certainly be honed in on as project scopes are developed further. The first two options, we're looking at around a five, five to five and a half million dollar, thank you. I don't have my glasses on. It's easier to see that. Five and a half million dollars construction cost. I will say that that does also include some electrical upgrades for switchgear replacement and generator replacements, which Chris will talk about in a little bit. The four-pipe unit ventilator, you'll notice that the cost estimate for that is around 10 million, and there's a reason. For this particular option, it really does not make sense to target the central plant for the classroom spaces. So, that estimate includes the entirety of the building, would be then conditioned by the central plant. The central plant size is sized to be able to handle the entire building. All of the other options are specifically targeted towards the classroom spaces only. So, it does not include the large spaces for the cafeteria, library, those large areas. The fourth option, you'll see the estimated construction cost is around $4 million. So, that would be the simplest construction option. Again, it comes down to your perception of what the disruption to the teaching environment would result from the additional noise within the spaces. With that, I'll give that back to Chris.
Thank you, Kevin. I do want to go back to this slide and also talk about it when we get to the roofing options. These are estimated construction costs. They do not include soft costs. Soft costs are typically a contingency you set aside for the unknowns, permit costs, fees, and things like that. So, those soft costs will be developed and presented in the final study. But for now, we just wanted to, before we get, before we get some feedback from you, we wanted to just focus on the conceptual construction cost for these options. So, with the roofing options, we looked at four different options. One, the first one being TPO, second one being an EPDM roof. The third and fourth options are both build-up roof systems. It's just that final layer on top is a little different. The construction of the roofing system itself is the same. So, wanted to get some pictures of your existing roof in front of you. Some of the areas that we would have to take consideration is, is that the? There we go. Along the roof, we have these mansard, the gold-colored metal roofs. Once you get into a design and look at that, that roof insulation below that is going to raise. You have to have more insulation there. So, when we get to the estimate, we included money in that estimate to deal with that metal roof. We assumed worst-case scenario and that, with that number, that all that metal would need to be replaced. I don't think that's the case. I'm hoping we don't have to touch it at all, but I wanted to make sure that when we present this to you, it's the worst-case scenario at this point, because I don't want to present something and come back after we start doing something and say, "Oh, we need more money because of this." So, we want to look at everything that's going to be involved, that could be involved with a project that you may move forward with. Some other roofing pictures, just to show, show you some of the things that are up there. Included in the number is you're raising some of the existing equipment. Some of the equipment is high enough to put a new roof on, but the majority of the roofing equipment, the existing skylights, those would also have to be raised with a thicker insulation. So, looking at a TPO roof, basically, it's your roof deck. Roof deck on the elementary school is a gypsum deck. It's not metal deck as pictured in this sketch here. You put a layer of board down, build it up with the insulation, another layer of recovery board, your adhesive, and then the final layer, it's a single ply system, is placed on top of the roof. The picture on the right just shows you what that roof looks like as a finished product. We would recommend putting the walking paths in, because it is a single-ply roof. The walking paths minimize the amount of foot traffic you have on the roof itself and helps protect that roof. An EPDM roof, similar to a TPO, the system is built up the same, just that top layer is basically called a rubber roof. And the picture on the right here is just what that roof would look like as a finished product. Again, that's a single-ply system, and while it's not pictured here, we would also recommend putting walking pads on that roof as well, just to minimize the foot traffic on that one-ply system. Looking at the build-up roof, the two options were a floodcoat and gravel and a mineral surface. Again, the insulation part is all the same. You have a board on the bottom, build up with insulation, a recovery board on top, and then the build-up system is multiple layers of membrane on top of that roof. With a mineral surface finish, that final layer has a fine gravel to it, basically. That's factory-applied. So, they roll the sheet out, adhere it down, and that finish is, comes that way. With the floodcoat and gravel system, there's a final layer of adhesive put down, whether it's a cold pitch, whether it's a hot tar, we have options there. And then, the gravel is broadcast across that. Both of these systems are intended to have foot traffic, so it wouldn't be required to put walking pads on these roofs. With the mineral surface one, you could. It's belt and suspenders. With the gravel one, that roof is intended to be walked on. And again, that's a multi-ply system. So, the TPO and EPDM are single-ply. The built-up roof, it's called built-up because it's built, you build up multiple layers of that roofing ply. And looking at the cost options, I need my cheat sheet on this one. So, this is, this is where we separated out that mansard roof. So, the 1.2 million is to replace all that metal. Again, I don't think that's going to be needed, but we wanted to identify worst-case scenario because it's so early in the concept. So, we separated that out so you could see what the estimates were for the roof itself, and then you add that in to get the overall number. So, with the TPO and the EPDM roof, they're both the same at about 3.9 million. The built-up roof with the mineral surface is about 4.4, and the floodcoat and gravel is a little bit more expensive at about 4.6. For estimating purposes, we just assumed everything was a 20-year warranty. Should you decide to go out for public bid, what the recommendation would be is to, you can bid all these systems as alternate bids, and you can also say, "Give us the estimate for a 25- or a 30-year warranty." And then, on bid day, you can compare the numbers that you get and make a determination then, instead of, in the design phase, just picking one and saying that's it. So, the recommendation would be to bid all of them in multiple-year warranties and see where the numbers fall. And again, with this one, the soft costs are not involved, same as the HVAC. All right. So, Kevin alluded to that we had some money in that HVAC budget for some of the existing electrical equipment. When we toured the building and walked through with Scott and his group, we found that the existing switchgear is pretty much original to the building. So, that switchgear is about 46 years, oh, no, it's 66 years old, yeah. So, it's, you have an excellent maintenance department and facilities department, because they take something that's supposed to last 25, 30 years and make it last 60 years. So, kudos to them for making your buildings operate so well for so long. But the switchboard is dated. It's not operating as well as it would have when it was 25, 30 years old. And it doesn't meet current requirements if you were to put a switchboard or switchgear in now. Same with the generator. The generator is just as old. It's very undersized for what would be required to be covered under backup or emergency services by today's codes and standards. The recommendation would be to put a new generator outside, because if you get new switchgear, that new switchgear is much larger than what was installed back then, and you're going to need the footprint inside that space for the additional size switchgear. So, again, money for the generator and switchgear, we're including that estimate just because of the date and the age of that equipment and some of the concerns that the facilities guys are having with it. Also looked at, just by walking through the building, it did come up at the last meeting about the exterior walls, so I wanted to make sure we talked about that. The exterior wall construction does show a two-inch rigid insulation in the cavity of the wall. That is even common by today's standards. So, I don't think we want to start approaching the exterior walls with this system and what you're looking at for work. The roof area is the primary, is the square footage of the building where you would have heat loss or heat gain from not having enough insulation. So, you're addressing that with this study by, you know, getting it back to where it needs to be with, by today's codes. And then, the heating system and cooling system would be designed with that understanding. And again, the exterior walls, it's, it's common even by today's standards as far as how it was built. So, that, that's an excellent thing. Some other things to consider, the fire alarm system is no longer supported. That's not saying it's not, doesn't work. That's not saying it's not safe. It is safe. It does work. The problem's going to be, as you move forward with anything in that building, it's going to be very difficult to support or to add on to. Emergency lighting, again, when it was installed, it met the current code. It doesn't meet today's codes and standards for emergency lighting. The panels, the panel feeders, the branch circuits, they were all installed with the switchgear and the generator. So, age-wise, they're right there with the rest of the electrical systems in the building. We didn't look at those, but these are some of the things that we wanted to maybe get some direction on from the board as far as, is this something that you want included in the study? And we could kind of keep that cost separate in what we identify so you can make some decisions moving forward with the building. And then, I know everybody's interested in timeline, too. So, I had to make an assumption on when the board would say, "This is what we're doing, and this, you know, we got the go-ahead to start doing something." So, I had assumed December of this year. I know there's a lot of information digest. I know we need to get you that final study. I know there's going to be questions with that, too. So, I didn't want to assume that, you know, I'm going to come here next month and you're going to say, "Okay, let's go." So, I assumed December of this year. About four or five months in design time, two months in bidding. And then, I wanted to make sure there's enough time in there to procure the materials and equipment. The last thing I wanted to do is try to get this work done summer of '25, because there's no time built in there to procure materials. And I don't want to do something and then have you start school in August, September, the following school year, and not have heating or cooling equipment, and then say, "Now, what do we do?" So, this timeline pretty much shows you that the work would start summer of 2026. That's sufficient time to get the mechanical equipment, get it all in hand and get it out here so that the very first day of summer break, we're in there doing work. And there might be some things we could do in advance to help that schedule. I mean, if ceilings need to come down, maybe we can get in there over holiday breaks or second shift work and start taking some ceilings down so contractors can start doing some of their layout that they would need to do with systems. So, the bulk of the work would happen this summer. If anything did happen in the school year, we would make sure that that does not interfere with the educational process of the school working as a school. Some of the caveats I have in here with the electrical equipment, while summer '26 sounds like a far time away, I don't know what the lead times are going to be for that kind of equipment. So, I just showed that that may have to be a summer '27 if we can't get the equipment, summer '26. And what we would have to do is do some temporary connections to the existing systems you have with a new HVAC. And then, option three, which was the central plant, that's more than just one summer's worth of work. Instead of trying to shut the school down and do work during the school year, the first summer of that, we would recommend building your central plant, leaving the existing equipment in for the school year, and then come back the second summer and tackle the equipment. One of the other questions that I'm sure someone will have is, "Can we do the roof sooner?" The simple answer to that is, yes, you can, but I don't think we would recommend that. I wouldn't want to see you install a roof and then, one year later, go back in and start poking holes in it for new HVAC equipment. So, the recommendation would be, if you're going to do the roof and the HVAC, do them together at one time and do it together in one bid package and get some efficiencies with that way. And that's our presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, one big question. Have we thought about not putting the air conditioning units back up on the roof? I mean, because isn't that more weight on the roof and less productive of our roof and more destructive of it?
So there's a couple of things that are in play with that. Some of the options absolutely can minimize what goes on the roof. If you end up doing the central plant, the only piece of equipment that we would need to find a home for would be the chiller, and that certainly can be mounted on grade if that's preferred. If you end up with either of the first two options, the way that type of equipment is designed, it's intended to be on a roof. So for the first two options, I think the rooftop DOAS equipment makes good sense. For the replace-in-kind equipment, the equipment is going back into the classrooms where it is now, so there would be minimal disturbance to the roof related to HVAC equipment.
That is a very good question, and one of the things that we included in that conceptual budget is, we're going to have to adjust some structural things to support some of that equipment if it doesn't go in where something sits now, or if it's heavier than what is there now. So some, some additional structural elements were also anticipated with putting equipment on the roof.
With the, with the VRF option, you're, you're heating the classrooms, what about the rest of the building? What happens to the cafeterias and any, any other, any other non-classroom?
Sure, as I understand that our task for the purposes of this study was to focus on classrooms, let's talk about each individual space. The cafeteria multipurpose room, half of that room right now has a relatively new air handling unit that serves that room. So at that point, we would be discussing the other half of that room if you wanted to incorporate that into the project. Hundred percent agree. The nice part about those first two options is that they are completely scalable. You could do one wing of the building if you wanted to do the next wing, the following summer, another wing the following summer, the multipurpose room.
What, what cost wise would that end up adding to it? Is there equipment in those areas right now that's reusable, or we would have to replace all that also?
So there's ductwork infrastructure that's in place for that space. I think if you were going to modify the rest of the multipurpose room, you would probably put an air handling unit up in the upstairs mechanical room in the similar location to where the old equipment is located. So I think you can reuse a lot of the distribution system, but you would end up with a new source.
So we would most likely need that in, in the cost estimate. You know, what's it going to take to heat the non, for heat and cool the non-classroom merits? That would have to be there.
Okay, we can certainly incorporate that.
You gave us a price of 20-year life expectancy and say we could bid at 25 to 30. About what does that add? Approximately, I'm not holding you to a number for the roof.
Jamie, do you have a ballpark, have you recently bid something where we did that as an alternate?
Sure, this is the reason that we would suggest to bid all of the versions of the roof and also all of the versions of the warranty. We've seen some projects where there's no added cost based on competition in the market. We've seen other projects where there's some additional cost.
Between 20 and 30 years, there's no additional cost?
Yes, we've seen bid projects where there is no additional cost. So, you know, when, when you cast a wide net, you get a large group of bidders, you bid early enough in the year, so the contractors know they have plenty of time to work on it. A lot of times, we've seen bids come in with no change in cost.
Okay, I didn't see any, can you give us an approximate cost, what it's going to cost to run these different air conditioning systems? Once the R-value is put up to 30, I realize now it's, it's not a good thing, but is there any way you can, how many square feet do we have?
Lots of questions. So the, the answer to your first question is yes. As far as the estimated operating costs, we're actually working on refining that, and that will be included in the final report. We don't have that finalized at this time. Square footage was 70,000-ish, 70, 77,000.
For the whole building, I think it's over 90?
Okay, it, it's in that ballpark.
You said about the noise in the system, the existing system, do we have a lot of noise now, is that what you're saying?
So the existing equipment that's in those classrooms is inherently noisy.
Okay, so why do we need a new generator? Just because it's old?
So from a capacity standpoint, it is very old. I think that if you're looking at doing emergency lighting systems, you would look to upsize that. The existing generator can't handle all of the current version of what building codes would require for that. Other things that you could consider adding to the generator would be freezers for the cafeteria. Right now, there's no backup source for heat for that building. If, if you have a power outage, your building has no heat in it.
You said we couldn't get parts, what, what parts are so hard to get? I don't understand that.
Sure, so there's, you can talk to Scott about that to give you a real good feel for it, but one of the things that's a real challenge is that the type of refrigerant that's being utilized in those systems is basically outlawed in the United States at this point. So the cost for refrigerant is very high. The manufacturer for the equipment doesn't exist anymore, so you're looking to scavenge parts where you can find them, I guess. You can't go to a warehouse and buy them, you're looking to scavenge them.
They don't have any aftermarket?
Well, that, that's, that's what Scott has been forced to do, is go back and find old parts from other systems which have been abandoned.
Right, but I mean, they didn't make any aftermarket parts?
That's a question for Scott, I don't have an answer for you.
Well, that's weird. That's weird.
Well, to, to further answer that, when the manufacturer went out, when the manufacturer went out of business, there may have been aftermarket parts developed, but again, the age of those parts, as each year goes on, it's harder and harder to get those aftermarket parts, they don't continue to make them. So when they first went out of business, I'm sure there was a, a supply that was available, probably not abundant, but available. And at this point in time, that, that source has just run out.
Okay. And on any of these systems for the air conditioning, did they have one central control to control the temperature, or does each room have their own?
So that's a, that's actually a yes, yes. You have the ability to control the temperature within each room independently. You also have the ability to tie all of those rooms together into a central system that you can override and manipulate however you choose.
Okay, thank you.
So the estimate does include a control system. And what Kevin's alluding to, the district may have a standard that says a classroom is allowed to be between the, between 68 and 72 degrees. So the individual in that room, that thermostat may provide adjustment between the range that has been set by the school district. So there's an overriding set, but the individual may have a little bit of adjustment to make it comfortable for that space.
I'd rather there's one control. I know what happened to the individual.
I, I agree with you, I agree with that, but I'm not sure, I wasn't sure what the dis, school district's policies are.
They'll say, I said what I'd like. I know what happens, so there's ones you can, everybody can play with.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which system has the moisture problem? And how bad is it?
Sure, so when you tried to do air condition, so the central plant option with the chilled water unit ventilators, historically has challenges with dehumidification. There are things that we can do to minimize that potential, but that type of system inherently does not do dehumidification well.
So you don't cool, you're not cooling down the air first and squeezing it before it goes up, is that?
That's correct. The outside air for that type of equipment is actually being brought through the cabinet, mixed with room air, and then conditioned from that point.
So, okay, but, but you're not going through the air conditioning system and squeezing it first before it goes into the rooms?
It is, the challenge with chilled water is, well, we can get on a rabbit hole here. The challenge with, so the, the simple version is, if you adjust your air conditioning delivered to the space by modifying the temperature and not cooling the air as much, if the room doesn't require it, you're not wringing as much moisture out by driving it down to that lower temperature, which is where you're, and then you recirculate that and recirculate that and continue to add moisture from outdoors. You end up with 60, 70 percent. Correct, correct.
And which system was that?
The option three, the central plant.
The four-pipe?
Correct.
Thank you.
That, that, that to me appears to be a problem that we may not want to have to try and deal with, especially since that's the most expensive option.
Yeah, but it's 30 years versus 20 years for the other.
You've got a lot of other issues.
The, the other thing, just to be clear about that option, was that it included replacing the electrical systems throughout the building, the HVAC systems throughout the building and the plumbing systems throughout the building. So it was a bigger scope of work.
Oh yeah, I, I got that. I wasn't, I wasn't complaining, but I understand that's a bigger scope. And central, a central utility center versus the individual rooms, yeah, I get it. I'm just worried about the, the humidity issue, because I've dealt with that in past buildings and it's, you don't want to, you want to take care of that before you build a building, not try and figure out how to fix it afterwards.
Correct. That's actually one of the biggest advantages to the two DOAS options, in my opinion, is that it is intentionally removing the moisture from that outside air before it comes into the building.
Okay, if I heard correctly, you said that the cafeteria has a newer air conditioning system in there? How newer is that?
How newer? It's a couple of years at the most, it was replaced recently.
Like within the last?
This 2016, 2017, we're going to ease a project. Same with the library and the multipurpose room as a VRF, and we just put the one in the auditorium, so I told them not to touch those areas since we already have VRF systems in them. So, I mean, we just be randomly looking at the same work. Whereas a four-pipe system would do the whole building, because why wouldn't you, you know?
All right, the second question is, you said you're going to come back with the cost estimates of each one?
We were talking earlier about operating cost estimates, yes.
Like our electric bill right now for Boyertown Elementary for like a year is like 88,000.
Correct.
And that's compared to like Gilbertsville, which is like 32, I think I said.
Yeah, but you have no R-value in the ceiling, that's why.
I know, but.
That and the type of system at Boyertown is inherently inefficient, since it's straight electric resistance heat.
So yeah, I would like to see some cost. Yeah, Gilbertsville is like 32.7 compared to 88.3, I mean, that's.
It's a big difference.
Yeah.
I, I agree wholeheartedly, and we'll incorporate that.
Thing, it would be different, but I don't think it's going to bring it down that much.
No, but if you actually went with the VRF and DOAS, that, that equipment is inherently very efficient.
I'd like to see the, the cost estimates.
Yep.
Have you dealt with any, being, you've been doing this, any companies that do an alternative heating sources, solar, geothermal? Because we're looking at a period of 20 to 30 years. I know in a house, a geothermal probably takes about 15 years till you break even, but after that, it's significantly less cheap. And I, and from talking to different people, there is money out there for solar from the federal government and the state because of green energy.
Sure, there's, there's certainly an opportunity for solar on this building, that's a very large roof area. That really isn't shaded at all, so I think there could be opportunities there. As far as geothermal goes, I don't know if this area is specifically karst topography. A lot of times, when you drill wells, you hit air pockets, there's no heat transfer there, which is a big challenge. Geothermal is certainly a fantastic system from an energy standpoint. We're working on a large building right now along those lines. We did not investigate that for the purposes of this particular building, simply because of the high first cost associated with the well field.
Can I ask a really dumb question? What kind of roofs did they have at the malls? Because I never see malls roof being replaced.
You want to take that? I would say a lot of those are EPDM, but what do you think?
I was just curious, because I never see.
I, I've, I've never done a mall, but I would assume, like Kevin said, they were probably TPO or EPDM roofs. They're probably a single ply system.
For that last, like, they could be 30 years.
They could, yeah, you can get a 30-year one. The, the difference in warranties will dictate the thickness of the membrane.
I mean, that's about the longest you can get, because I want to mark some of these malls.
30-year warranty for a single ply roof is a relatively new thing in the past year or two. So it's been new, so new that we haven't seen a 30-year roof perform yet. We haven't had one that's been around for 30 years to see how it, how it, how it works. But absolutely, the malls and anything commercial, all of those property owners are trying to minimize their costs and maximize their rent. So I'm sure it's the, the thinnest single ply roof that they can get away with and get the longest warranty.
But how, how long has it been, have you ever gone past a mall and seen they're putting all these roofs in?
I, I actually just was past one, where they did some work, they actually did some work at King of Prussia recently on, on the roof system down there. But yeah, now, now I have to look every time I go past a mall. I have to look if there's enough stores in the mall, and I have to look in there to see if they've done any roofing.
Yeah, but I, I've never seen any, maybe I'll get out of town often enough.
And when they were built, the other thing is, you know, I would not be surprised if in some cases, they did built-up roofs and they were hot, applied multi, multi-ply roofs, thinking that they'd put them on, leave them on, and never replace them.
I'm going to have to go to Google Earth now and take a look.
Now, you've got, you've got us curious now.
Let me know what you find. I'm on the website.
On your natural gas heat, do you have, can you break that down in cost, you know, well, the electric heat we already know? Would that be any different, it would come down if we put new units up there?
Absolutely, so when we do the cost estimates that we were discussing earlier, we'll have a breakdown of the fuel costs for each specific fuel source. So for the natural gas, DOAS will have the expected gas heat requirements for the outside air and then the electric requirements for the rest of the building.
And on the natural gas, would we, would we fall under that, Patty, if we?
We join, on a corporation on that as far as gas purchase?
We utilize, through the IU, like, consortium bid, so we do the electricity.
Okay, thank you.
So just to give me a reference point. So if we went, I'm just going, these are just throwing them out there. So if we went to VRF with DOAS, that would be 5.4 million. Then on top of that would be the roof, let's say we went with the roof that's, say gravel, that would additionally be, can't go as fast as I can here, it's not moving real fast. That would be additional, additional about 4.6, so we're approximately 10 million there. How many more costs are there above that? Because it sounds like the generator is separate, the electrical is separate.
So the generator and the switchgear are included in that HVAC number.
Okay.
What's not included in these numbers, again, are the soft costs. Some things that aren't technically associated with building, you know, doing the work.
Okay, so, so generators in there, HVAC and, or HVAC, switchgear?
Correct.
And all the electrical work is also in there, so the whole cost, just as, would be about 10 million if that was all.
Construction costs.
Yeah, fire alarm, lights, all that.
The fire alarm and lights and the panels were not. So the, the switchgear and the generator are included in that number.
Yeah, so what would that add if we went with the fire alarm system? What are we talking there?
I would think soft costs and all included for the systems, you're somewhere between about 12 and 15 million. And I'm just pulling, I'm pulling.
Oh yeah, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Knowing that you have a fire alarm, you have open life safety. We're talking about what we do in, in other spaces, all, there's a little bit of a variable there, but it sounds like 20% is usually a number that you would throw for soft costs. It's fees and permits and other things, and then you've got these other systems on top. So it's starting to sound to me like a 12 to 15.
15 million dollars, because we talked about the fire alarm system and pretty much said that's going to be obsolete. Pretty much.
It's difficult to service right now, yes.
Yeah, and other things that are in there are also obsolete. And I understand obsolescence, so if you can't get the parts, we don't want to tie into them.
Right.
We can do fundraisers.
Okay, so twelve to fifteen, I'm looking for it to a pause. Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking.
At the mall.
Yes.
Looking at all of this, could you foresee any other costs possibly? Not that we're gonna be, you start working on it and down the road you see, oh, this might need to be done, so that's another million or whatever. Are you seeing anything else?
So we tried to identify the, anything else in that one slide, you know, concern about the panels and the feeders and things like that. If it's focusing on an HVAC and roofing scope, those are some of the things that we would wanna address. Honestly, I didn't look at anything with ADA. I didn't look at, you know, toilet rooms. We didn't look at plumbing systems. I don't know what the sanitary system looks like. So outside of just looking at the HVAC and the roof, I, we try to anticipate those what-ifs. But we didn't take that look beyond looking at the HVAC and roof.
If, if you like, we can work with the administration and the leadership in the school just to identify if there's anything else that they've seen in the building, could be architectural or otherwise, that would be brought for your consideration to be included in a project if there is one. Just wanted to get your feedback tonight after doing what we were asked to do to see if there, we should do something that would be more comprehensive. So completely up to you.
Mrs. Denikola, how would we be looking, how would we be looking to finance this?
We would utilize capital reserve funds.
Do we have that kind of money in the capital reserve funds?
We do at this time. The suggestion would be that we develop, with Dewey's assistance, a full capital review of the district facilities to determine what we'd be looking at on an annual basis going forward to bring all of our buildings up to date. Those amounts would then be, have to be allocated as part of the general fund budget process each year to start savings for those projects in future years.
Aren't we already committing millions to another project? And does that still leave us this amount in there without, with our present capital expenditures?
With the present capital expenditures, it does, correct.
Then that includes the...
An estimated amount for the potential turf project, correct.
So how far down would I take it?
Once we get the final numbers, we can give an update to the board.
I think we need that announced.
Patty, as far as grant money, help, federal government, state?
So we have made application to DCED under the Public School Improvement Grant Program. DCED did have a board meeting this past week, last week actually. They did not announce any of the projects. They were uncertain whether or not they would have a board meeting in October, so that remains to be seen. But they do have another meeting in November that we're hopeful that they will announce projects that will be funded.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one has signed up for public comm period number one, so at this time we'll be looking for the approval of the September tenth, twenty twenty-four committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Zawada moves.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
As previously before, I asked about putting in information, especially when it comes to legal counsel, and it has not been put on the agenda, so now I'm gonna talk about it now. Because I really believe anytime we ask Mr. Sultanic for legal information, it should be part of the minutes.
For what purpose?
For us to go back and look at.
Yeah, but for what purpose, though?
For information. So why, why didn't board leadership look at this legal information and do something about it?
Look at what legal information?
Whatever legal information he may have given throughout that night.
Because it doesn't supersede the vote, the vote or the motion?
No, it doesn't, but at least we can say, why didn't board leadership look at it?
I still don't understand what that means. When should board leadership look at with...
Why shouldn't board leadership have considered it? Why shouldn't the board have considered it? And maybe change the motion or change the outcome of something?
Because it was already voted on.
Then why do we pay a solicitor to be here?
Is that the goal?
No, that's not the goal.
The goal is not to get rid of the solicitor? Because that's the only thing that I could see coming of you looking at that.
Me looking at it tells me, we asked legal counsel for an opinion, a legal opinion.
Yes.
And why isn't the board looking at that legal opinion?
Who says the board isn't looking at it? Did you look at it? The board can look at anything they want. I don't follow you.
I have to go back and look at videos rather than have it be there in the minutes.
Okay, I think I understand what you're saying. But it still doesn't change what we voted on or emotions.
But possibly it could. Somebody could say, hey, we made a mistake. Let's go back and correct it.
We just had this discussion at the end of the last meeting.
I know.
That you were taking into consideration. We're just going rehashing the same stuff. It's like, and you still haven't answered that. So it was put in there because there were some questions asked and there were some answers given that didn't come back, weren't in the minutes, and we weren't allowed to challenge that decision. So now we don't want anything that goes into, that, that can go forward and not be caught. So that's why we asked to have the, anything legal or actionable placed in the minutes so that we can go back and challenge it. Because I don't wanna be caught in that, caught in that situation again. Like even tonight, I'm gonna vote no in accepting the minutes because we haven't addressed it. And until we do, and I was told, Mr. Sultanic did say that as soon as we, as soon as we accept those minutes, we're stuck and we have to take it. Well, I'm not gonna accept them anymore until it's in.
Okay. But even if it was on the minutes, there's nothing you can challenge. You still can't challenge the vote. The vote is the vote. The way the motion is written up doesn't get superseded by a legal opinion that's in the minutes.
We would have brought back the legal opinion to say, hey, it was supposed to come back to us. You agreed to it and now all of a sudden you just passed it through. So no, it is, it is actionable at that point.
Is it, Mr. Sultanic? Because I understand it as it is, and that's why I think this is a waste of time. Otherwise, I would have put it through.
Then I don't accept any minutes. I'll make it real easy on that.
Okay. Well then, let's call for that roll call.
You just asked Mr. Sultanic for...
We're doing a roll call now on the minutes? Well, you, you could give your legal opinion of what Mr. Brophy just brought up.
I, I believe that once the board adopts minutes that reflect an action, that action is binding upon the board irrespective of what was stated or what the video shows under the circumstances, since the minutes are the only valid record of the meeting.
No, I, what I'm asking you is, if your opinion was added to the minutes now?
It still doesn't change the underlying vote.
And it can't be challenged because you maybe said something different?
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted. Okay.
What I was asking though is, Mr. Sultanic made a, a comment that those, that legal document should have came back to us for review again after all those questions and issues were answered. It never came back for us to look at again. Never.
Okay.
We should have looked at that after all those corrections.
But it wasn't in the motion. It wasn't in the motion. It wasn't voted on like that. And even if it was, even if Mr. Sultanic at the time had that in the minutes, it wouldn't have changed anything. That's the point.
Yes, it would have.
No, it wouldn't. He just said it would have.
Because it would have come back.
He just said it would have.
No, no, if the motion, the underlying motion, my comments do not modify the underlying motion. If the underlying motion was modified to reflect that issue, that would be correct. It would come back. But I think it's your board president's opinion, which I agree with on this particular matter, that if the motion was shown and adopted as it was, and it was subsequently reflected in the minutes, that binds it and what I said or what Patty said or what anybody said doesn't modify the underlying motion. That's, that's the issue.
But we wanted it done for the future, and that's, I think, what Miss Nyman's saying also. And you said you'll take it under consideration. How long does that take for you to consider it?
How, how long has it been? Two weeks?
Yeah.
And we just had a discussion right now? And I'm still in agreement with, with this listener. Roll call.
You gotta be kidding. You just had a discussion now.
We're gonna do roll call for the September tenth committee of the whole meeting minutes. Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
No.
Ms. Deroff?
No.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm abstaining.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarallo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Treasurer's report.
Good evening. Tonight I will be presenting a few highlights from the August two thousand twenty-four treasurer's report. For local revenue, in delinquent tax collection was approximately ninety-six thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents. Earned income tax collection was approximately three hundred seven thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. And transfer tax collection was approximately one hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. For state revenue, PD basic education subsidy was approximately two million, six hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. PD pre, pre-K count subsidy was approximately forty-five thousand. Transportation subsidy was approximately one hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars. And property tax relief payment was approximately one million, two hundred ninety thousand, two hundred two dollars. And for August expenditures in the category of salary benefits and professional services, they accounted for about forty percent of the monthly expenditures for August. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented? Ms. Updegrove, I'll second it.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarallo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we're moving on to the superintendent consent agenda. We have one item on there, which is a confidential settlement release agreement, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Panarallo moves.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff? Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarallo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the superintendent's itemized agenda, the first item that we have are two overnight trips. The first one being a performing arts tour of Williamsburg, Virginia and Washington, DC. The second one being a trip to the Student Council PASC State Conference in Midland, PA. So I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Roll call. Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
No.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarallo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is the Board of School Directors looking to approve the Washington Elementary School Point Five Teachers Memorandum of Understanding as Presented. The solicitor has reviewed the MOU. Looking for a motion to approve.
Zawada moves.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
No.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarallo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on the itemized agenda is looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five BASH School Musical, Once Upon a Mattress, and the proposed budget that corresponds with it. Looking for a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarallo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is looking for the Board of School Directors to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to contract in coordination with the Berks Intermediate Unit for the strategic purpose of electricity supply services through Provident Energy Consulting LLC for the period beyond June of two thousand and twenty-five for as many as thirty-six months. Looking for a motion to approve. Comments or questions?
You said for no, no more than thirty-six months?
For as many as thirty-six months.
So it would go from July of now. When does it start?
For, we're locked until June of two thousand twenty-five. This would be for that next cycle.
Okay, 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 okay. And what's that rate?
So we have to put this on the agenda prior to the IU going out and getting the bid pricing. When you receive the bid pricing on the electricity purchasing, they don't hold those rates to wait for a board meeting. So we need to have the ability to approve the contract at the IU's recommendation as soon as they give us the rates, because they will, the providers do not hold the rates.
What happens if the rates are more exorbitant than what?
If the rates are not of quality, we will not bid. We will not, the IU will not bind. They will wait till the market improves, and that's why we do it so far in advance. We have...
I just want to make sure we're not gonna be locked in then if...
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarallo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on the itemized agenda is the purchase of a vehicle to support the transportation needs of district students facing homelessness. The Board of School Directors looking to approve the purchase of a certified pre-owned two thousand and twenty-two Chevrolet Equinox from Quigley Chevrolet to be paid for with available grant funds that must be utilized by September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Looking for a motion to approve.
Panarallo moves.
I'll second.
Comments and questions?
Yes, good.
So how much is the car? What, what are we spending? How many does it seek? Can you tell us a little bit about it? And then, how often will we be needing this? Who is so responsible for, I mean, I know we're responsible to ensure it and all of that. How does that compare to what we've done before as far as costs? I'll leave it at that. That's enough right now.
I'll speak to the cost and then Kristen Horton can share some information of how it would be utilized. The cost is approximately twenty-six thousand dollars. It would be fully funded by the grant, and it would allow us the ability to do transportation on our own for those students that become suddenly homeless. It would provide, in the long run, cost savings to the district because we would then not have to be sharing the cost of transportation for students in a homeless situation with the school district that they're placed in. We had one student in, in particular that was, became homeless midway through the year. We had to contract with the school district that they were residing in and share the transportation costs, and that was almost fifteen hundred dollars just for one student. So we will be utilizing it to... So we will be utilizing it to fill that need for, unfortunately, when our students do face a homelessness situation.
Do we have a large number right now?
Dr. Horton, are you able to share some numbers? It does fluctuate with what students are categorized as. Do you have any numbers that could help to answer that question?
So our current numbers right now, we have 25 students who are categorized and supported under McKinney-Vento. That rate typically goes up throughout the year. So at the beginning of the year, our numbers are lower. And then typically, at the end of a school year, we have somewhere between 50 and 70 students who would be identified under McKinney-Vento as living in a temporary living situation. And so oftentimes, what we've seen in the last couple of years is an increase in students who are living within shelters and motels and occasionally doubling up with family members or friends in other districts. When that happens, we still, as a district, have an obligation to provide transportation. And when our families are moving between shelters, oftentimes, there isn't a lot of notice there. Sometimes, we have, you know, less than 24 hours. And being able to ensure that they have consistent education and access to school can be challenging just in order to create routes that quickly. So when we have the ability to utilize a vehicle that is here for disposable, disposable, disposal, we can ensure that students are getting to school on a regular basis because we often find that students miss a number of days of school when their situation is changing with housing. And then we know when our kids are out of school that that impacts their learning, that impacts their ability to have meals when they are here at school. So, you know, I would say that each year, we are supporting students with that transportation need more. We did have that situation that Patty was referring to where we had a student out of district. And when that is the case, our districts share transportation costs. So the District of Residence and the District of Education would share that cost. There are times where we aren't able to provide our end of the transportation obligation due to the distance or a shortage of vehicles. And so when that does happen, we have to contract with that other district if they're able, and then they bill us for the transportation. So this would allow us to provide better access from that perspective.
Okay. Do you have someone solely that designated to be the driver of this van? I mean, or do you have a couple of people that you rely on? So they're administrators, correct? Or are they?
There have been times where I have transported students, yes. Our district social worker also has transported students as well. So I believe that, and I'd have to look to Mrs. Denicola for this, but that when we have other folks who would be able to provide transportation when their license is on file with the district. So that would also allow multiple people to help in providing that transportation.
Okay.
Okay. How many security vehicles do we have? Don't we have one at the high school and one, both at the middle schools? So that's three security vehicles we have that don't get used all the time. We have a van that sits out back here all the time, is used once in a while. And don't we also have vans over at the high school that are sitting there for use?
There is a fleet of vans at the high school as well.
So I think we have vehicles sitting around here that can be utilized rather than spending this money, and we can use this for something else that's needed. I don't see us buying another vehicle.
So to speak on the vehicles that we currently have, the one that sat behind the Ed Center is now currently used by Mr. Bohm, or Officer Alex out there. The other one's at East for that security guard, so that's two vans. We have 319, which is the security van at the high school, which I'm told is used to transport students regularly. 315, 316, and 317 are the three vans we have at the high school, but they're often out for multiple activities, sporting events and whatnot. They're very rarely in the lot. So if you're looking for a consistent vehicle, we really don't have any in the district that just sit.
But they're here during the day when the student needs to go somewhere. Students basically are not going anywhere during the day.
They're utilized at all times of the day. I wanted to use them at different points for various activities. So I'm just telling you the log. We have a log, so I can share that with you of how often they're used.
I would like to see that log before we vote on this. I mean, there's vehicles around here, and I just.
Yeah.
Patty, is that money grant money for this vehicle?
This would be grant money. Grant money that was received solely for the purpose of supporting homeless children and youth within our district. There's very limited flexibility for these funds. This is the greatest need at the time for the district.
What else can it be used for? What else can that grant money be used for?
We've used it for lodging for students when they suddenly became homeless. Kristin's used it to pay other districts for transportation, parents for transportation. That's been the bulk of what the funds have been used for. But this would fulfill a great need that the district has, and it's solely grant funded. Adding one vehicle to our insurance policy does not increase our costs. The ongoing maintenance of the vehicle would be provided for as part of the People Services Budget.
But taking Mrs. Horton out of the district for what, an hour probably or so to go get somebody and come back? That's not good either for us.
I got a question. And these homeless kids are all students going to, like, Boyer Town? Or it's not a private school or anything like that, or a religious school? Are they all publics?
Correct. They're all students who are students in our district. And there are, with McKinney-Vento, our obligation for transportation extends beyond the school day. So also removing barriers to access to extracurriculars, like sporting events, is something too that we have obligation to ensure that students have the ability to participate in those programs if they want. So again, the vehicle would provide opportunity for helping students to attend those extracurriculars as well as helping parents to attend conferences or meet the teacher nights and those other activities that happen within the school day or in the evening beyond the school day. Oftentimes, as well, our students under McKinney-Vento, those families don't necessarily have a vehicle or have multi, or multiple vehicles in their family. So if a student is here at school and becomes ill, there have been times where students don't have a way to get home because that family doesn't have a vehicle. So it just provides us better access to support those students when we have the ability to meet some of their different needs and challenges that they have with the vehicle. It allows us to provide that service beyond the grant period because we have that resource accessible that continues beyond the timeframe for the grant funds.
When does this money go away, Patty? Where do we have to spend it by?
September 30th, 2024.
Also, can we get a specification on this particular car, mileage, model, that kind of stuff?
Yes, you can. I believe there was information put in the weekly update in regards to, but we can provide the full specifications.
I don't have a problem, I don't think, with buying something like that after hearing, and I've been asking for an explanation. But what I don't like is the fact that we'll be taking administrators away from the high school once again, or from their job, to be drivers because that $15,000 that you said we were paying for one student, that's going to be eaten out really quick with using that type of personnel to drive. We need all the help we can have at the high school. I would rather not pull anybody from there. There surely should be something different we could do.
What qualifications would you need to become a driver? Would you have to be an employee of the district?
Yes, you would need to be an employee of the district, and we supply all the information to the insurance company on the driver's license.
And I'm not always the one doing the driving. You know, there are times where I occasionally do do some of the driving, but Mrs. Quincy, our social worker, does some of the driving as well. And it does provide her a nice opportunity to connect with families when she is there, either picking up or dropping off a student to find out what their needs are, are there any other things that they need when they're staying at the shelter or, you know, when they're at a hotel, or even just taking them to a home to learn more about their situation and support. So although I know it sounds like just driving, it also opens an opportunity for engagement and to hear from students, things that they might be experiencing in the school and needs that they might have related to clothing, school supplies, and those things as well.
Is a board member considered an employee?
Since Mr. Quigley is here, I'm sure Mr. Quigley could say that we do have vans more than likely available that we could charge the district for.
That's what we do every day.
So I think there's an abundance of vehicles around.
Do we lose this money by that date?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if we were to use the money and give it to Mr. Quigley for the van to be there for us?
The grant does not allow you to pre-encumber funds in that way for future expenditures.
Call vote. Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes, but I do want to see those logs for that van.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the itemized agenda is looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the Personnel Agenda Item as Presented. Looking for a motion to approve.
Zawada seconds.
Comments and questions? Mrs. Nyman.
Okay, I see we have another resignation from a custodian, which is concerning. And we have a lot of corrections. I mean, name changes that weren't accurate and figures that weren't accurate on the original one. Can somebody please explain why?
Sure. So I send the draft to Sandy, and then I meet with my team on a Thursday to review a bunch of the information. And we use something in Excel called our action items. So we cross-reference that. There's many times that there's one digit, like, for example, the one rate. We didn't catch it, so that falls on me for the errors in regards to the corrections with either a spelling or with a rate. So we're going to have, instead of having one meeting, we're going to have multiple meetings so that we don't have so many corrections in regards to spelling or rates.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Diroff. Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Panerello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes my itemized superintendent's report.
Nobody signed up for public comment period number two, so this would be board comment period. Ms. Updegrove?
Yes, we had two girls that qualified for state championship on the golf team, and we had three boys that are already qualifying for the boys on the state championship golf. Three girls and two boys. Oh, and I will be attending the meeting tomorrow night at the BCTC, so I'll have a report next, at our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stout, I have a question for you. Has any board member had a key card to get into this place prior to you being acting superintendent?
The answer is yes.
And how many have them?
I believe the president has a key card.
And can we explain why he has one?
I was not part of the decision-making process when that took place.
And Mr. Sultanic, is that normal practice?
I am not aware of what normal practice is in districts in terms of issuance of key cards. It's usually a local procedure. This is the only district that I have ever heard this being an issue.
Okay, then I'm asking this board for that all of us get a key card. Why should you have one and the rest of us shouldn't? Why are you, you're no different than us.
I am.
No, you're not.
I am different.
No, you're not.
You want to explain to me?
Just because.
I'll explain to you right now why I'm different. I go to 52 more meetings than you do. I go to a meeting every week that you do not go to. So me and the vice president go to 52 more meetings. And if you're on a committee, that could even be more than that. That could be, let's say, six. So on average, I go to 58 more meetings than you do in the middle of my workday. So yes, we are different in that sense.
You are no better than the rest of this board.
No one said that. We're different, though. I have more responsibilities. I come here at least 52 to 58 more times than you do. That's considerable in the middle of my workday.
So?
So that's why I have one. You wanted to know, now you know.
Then maybe you shouldn't be board president then.
How long have you been on the board?
I have been on the board 11 years.
And how many times were you president or in leadership at all?
I was not.
There's a reason for that.
No, there's not.
Sure there is.
Mr. Sultanic, can one board member be treated differently by the administration and others? Is that even legal? Considered a perk to me.
Well, that's not, that's not true. It wasn't one person.
It is.
No, it's not.
Who's the other one?
Me and Mr. Updegrove both had it when we became leadership. And then when he was not leadership, he gave his up.
That's interesting.
Because he comes to those meetings with me.
Well, let me go back.
Good.
I made a request three years ago
Uh huh.
to the superintendent at that time that all the board members would get a card. I was told that the administration's position was board members are not employees and therefore not entitled to cards. So therefore, none would get cards. So what you're telling me is you and Mr. Updegrove, in defiance of an administrative position, have been given specialized treatment and a perk that the rest of us don't have. So that, my question is now is what do you give back for that perk? Is there, is there a payback?
I have no idea what you're talking about. I had no idea that you once asked for it because you've never mentioned it before. This is the first time hearing of it.
Because it was turned down.
And Ms. Torschit never told me anything about that either.
I'm just telling you, it was a, Mr. Stout, is it an administrative position, administration's position, that board members do not get cards because they are not employees? Is that the position you know of?
I'm not aware of that comment, to be truthful, at that time because I was not part of those conversations.
Okay, then, so when can I expect my card?
As I stated numerous times, in the current circumstances with looking for a superintendent and with the reorganization on the horizon, I had shared with you in writing that I was not going to make a decision on that until a decision was made about the next step of this because I did not want to go back on a decision that was made, and I didn't think it was in my best interest.
What decision was made?
That the board president has a key card.
And the rest don't. So there's no violation of anything there. So, you know, you're here at this point in time. You may be here for a little bit, but right now, it's like in the old Navy, it's like you own the sheets. So you get to make the decision. And the decision right now is you're treating a board member differently than the rest and giving him perks that the rest of us do not have. I'm not, I'm not, I'm sure, it's not ethical, but at the very least. So it's not, I don't know about legality, and I'm not even going to ask Mr. Sultanic at this time. But right now, Mr., it's obvious that Mr. Panerello believes he is above the rest of us. He's mostly stating that. He's special. So.
Oh, no, no, I never said that.
You didn't?
No, 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 I said, I said I go to 52 more meetings than you.
You said you're special.
I said I'm special?
Yeah, she said you're special.
Check the minutes. Is that on the minutes?
I don't know. I didn't write them down.
Exactly.
We don't keep them.
I know.
So maybe you should look into that.
Wait for your turn for comment. Are you done?
Nope, I'm not done.
Then continue.
So there are some legal cases out there, and there's Palm versus Center Township. And I'm going to cite those two, and I'm going to ask for my key card.
Which case?
I have them both here if you'd like them.
Okay. What's it called?
Palm v. Center Township.
Oh, it's a township case.
It pertains to also school board members.
Okay, I'll look at it. Just for the record, Mr. Sultanic, if I'm doing something illegal or unethical, I would gladly give up my card. I am not aware of any... That's never been asked to me. I am, I'm not aware of any illegality associated with you having a procurement, not a procurement, a, a access card to the administration facility.
So in essence, a board member can be treated differently from the rest and that's, there's nothing wrong with that. That's interesting to know.
I just wanted to thank Allison and Leanna for coming tonight and spending time with us and giving us their reports. Thank you.
Ms. Dieroff?
I have to thank you very much for helping me all night long with my computer. Thank you. Okay. I was perusing some of the other school districts and I was wondering why we don't have committees on a lot of things that other school districts do, such as the extracurriculars, human resources, technology, transportation, personnel, and special ed curriculum. Do you have any answers for me?
I agree with everything you just said. I said that when I first, if you became president.
That's a first.
But it does happen.
If you ever agreed with me.
But I did say that when I first got on as president and I was told that we didn't need it.
I also like to know why, can I ever say anything with that?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm disagreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you.
This is my time.
Go ahead.
I also want to know, I just read about the Governor's School Breakfast Challenge, where, how come Boyer Town wasn't participating on that? There was, I think, 30-some schools that were awarded grants or some money because they took the challenge. With our security cameras, do we have door and lock windows slides, locker alarms, panic buttons that are hooked up to our network? Can we tie ours whole system into Wi-Fi? I don't know who's in charge of safety, but I'd like to know those answers. I'd like to know if we checked all our insurance policies because of the problem we just had to make sure we're properly insured because with all the civil unrest right now with the floods, the hurricanes, if we'd have a severe power outage or we insured for all those things. I'd like to know if we're applying for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, the PCCD grant, Safety and Mental Health. One other thing I've been wondering about, and I keep forgetting to ask, I read where someone, I think it was in Reading School District, took the money illegally from the union dues. She was arrested and whatever. So if those union dues were taken, stolen by someone, obviously they didn't get paid into the union. Who makes up those monies? Does that say that the whole coffer is, say, it's a million dollars, I don't remember what it was. But if that's a million dollars, does every school district in Pennsylvania have to help make up that million dollars or does Reading School District have to make it up because that's where the money should have went in from?
That would have been the Reading School District. That would have had to make that up.
So that doesn't pass on to any other, oh, that's good.
When we collect union dues, they're made payable directly out of our payroll system. Every time payroll's processed, directly to the Boyer Town Area Education Association.
Oh, I know, we're safe, but I meant with the PS, with the union losing all that money.
It does not come back to us.
It, nobody else has to pay it, just the district? Okay, good. And I would, I asked a couple of times when Mr. Sultanic did a presentation on AI, but I never heard anything from, from our curriculum committee or anything, what, if we're doing anything or what, how that's being incorporated. So I'd like to know about that. And then lastly is, September is the National Suicide Month. So I hope all of you people remember to be available for anybody that would cry out for help. Anybody always has eight minutes to help someone that could save a life. And always, always remember, this world is a better place with you in it. Thank you.
Mr. Stout, several times in the past few weeks, I've asked to be able to meet with the facilities director at one of our schools and look at the, some equipment we used to have, the old planetarium, because I've been asked questions about it. You've denied me access to the building at least twice. Could you explain why I can't meet with them and why I'm denied access? And I don't want, I'm not interested in hearing you want to have a board get-together on it. I wanted an individual meeting with them, not a board meeting. This isn't a board issue because nobody else on the board's asked about it. So why are you denying me access?
I wanted to provide equal opportunity for all board members to have access to it and the...
Hold it a minute. Would you take that back a second about equal opportunity and equal treatment? No. I want to, I want to go. So when, when can I have that?
On October 8th, prior to our school board meeting, the whole board is invited to the planetarium and I have set Mr. Schiel and Mr. Idol, who is an instructor at the high school, to give an overview of the planetarium.
So in equal treatment, I guess we all should expect our key cards on October 8th, correct? Okay, you shouldn't. I have asked for an individual meeting, not a board meeting. So you still believe that an individual board member asking for access to a building that I'm supposed to provide governance and oversight to, I'm not allowed to go in? Because you won't, you won't give me access to it on a very simple request? Is that correct? I mean, what, what, what depths do I have to go to to get this? It's a very simple request.
I'm sticking to my October 8th meeting.
Okay. Then I'll stick to what I have to do next.
Yeah, I think this meeting's going on too long already, so announcements.
Upcoming meeting dates are October 8th. The Committee of the Whole Meeting will be at Middle School East at 7:00 PM. And then October 22nd, the Board of School Directors meeting will be here back at the Ed Center at 7:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.